This conference will now be recorded.
Well, there we go. Welcome, everyone, to the first Muscatine City Council meeting in March, March 4th. Cinda, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Freilich?
Present.
Councilmember Malcolm?
Present.
Councilmember Gordon?
Present.
Councilmember Brockert?
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich? Councilmember Brackett?
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, Cinda. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance-
To the flag-
To the flag-
The United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic-
To the republic-
For which it stands-
For which it stands-
One nation-
A nation.
Under God-
Under God.
Indivisible-
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to move along with tonight's agenda. We're on number five, or I'm sorry, number four, communications from citizens. I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak to council about something that's not on tonight's agenda? And this is a good time to just remind everyone that this item is for informational purposes only. So items that actually, that are brought up during this time are not going to be deliberated by council during this meeting, but if it's something that needs deliberation, we can add it to a meeting down the road. But if there's, is there someone here that would like to address council?
Yes.
Yes, please state your name and address.
I am Freedom Malik Roberts. I live at 1836 Hershey Avenue, and I'm here tonight as the renewable energy advocate for Clean Air Muscatine. Currently, the local utilities in the planning stages of decommissioning their multiple coal power plants and replacing them. CLAM believes the best option moving forward is to choose 100% green energy portfolio for the city. We feel this way because a transition to 100% green energy production would provide a range of benefits for the community, such as reduced greenhouse gas emissions, improved air quality, enhanced public health, business attraction, local job growth, increased resilience, and energy security. Scientific consensus regarding the reality of climate change and the connection between human activity, especially the combustion of fossil fuels that create greenhouse gases and warm the planet. The 2018 report of the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, IPCC, found that to limit global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius, there would need to be a 45% reduction of greenhouse gases from 2010 levels by 2030, and a need to reach net zero by 2050. If any of the public feels the same way, we encourage you to participate in the Choose Green Muscatine program offered by MPW and choose to make your households 100% powered with renewables. You can call MPW and request this, or go to mpw.org/choose-green. I would hope the mayor and city council have already joined the program and run their respective households on 100% green power. If the council or public has any interest in helping CLAM encourage the use of only green energy, please reach out to us at cleanairmuscatine@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Do I have a motion tonight to approve the consent agenda, which includes item 6A, item 9A, items 12A through E, and tonight's bill is totaling $1,374,243.35?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilman Hopkins, with a second by Councilwoman Gordon. Councilman Freilich, do you agree?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich? Councilman Gendrich?
He's saying aye, but you can't hear him.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilman Brockert, or Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The motion carries, and we will continue on down. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one is on the proposed amendment development agreement with Bush Development and Hershey Property for Hershey Building Project. Everything has been explained in the attachments. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to close?
Move to close, Mayor.
Second, please.
Freilich?
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett, with a second by Councilwoman Brockert. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich? Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins? Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The motion carries, and just so you know, Councilman Gendrich, we cannot hear you at all. And we'll continue on to the next public hearing, which regards the maximum tax levy for fiscal year 2021-2022. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing nothing, I'll accept a motion to close.
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilman Gordon, with a second by Councilwoman Brockert. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich? Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
This public hearing is closed, and we'll move to nine. We have a proclamation tonight regarding Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, an Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increases property values, enhance the economic value of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Muscatine has been recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Now therefore, I, Diana Broderston, Mayor of the City of Muscatine, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 30, 2021, as Arbor Day in the City of Muscatine. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and wood plants. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I would like to ask Nick Chow if he would like to say a few words regarding Arbor Day.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council, for your consideration and approval of the Arbor Day proclamation. The City of Muscatine just celebrated its 29th year of recognition as a Tree City USA community, and as part of the application for Tree City USA, a proclamation for Arbor Day must be approved. The mission of Tree City USA is greening communities across the country, and this program is a great opportunity to celebrate the importance of urban tree canopy and roof care for these vital trees. Each year in celebration of Arbor Day, at least one tree is planted in our park system. We have some exciting opportunities for tree planting. We just submitted a grant application for up to $5,000 for the purchase of trees as part of the Trees Forever Align Energy branching out grant, and we will be finding out here in the next few weeks if we will receive that grant. We've received several of these grants over the past several years, and we've been able to plant hundreds of trees with these grant funds. The Parks and Recreation Department is also partnering with H&amp;I Corporation for the donation of 500 trees to be planted in our parks and athletic facilities in our community. Our hope is to possibly work this donation and planting into the Arbor Day celebration. So there's definitely some planting opportunities out there for some tree plantings coming up in the near future, and we look forward to Arbor Day. And once again, thank you for your continued support of Arbor Day and Tree City USA for the City of Muscatine.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate all that extra information, and we know that the planting of trees in our community is huge, and like the proclamation says, it warms and gladdens the hearts of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to continue on down. We're on 11A, and this is the second reading of an ordinance. That proposes adoption of an ordinance under Title VI, Chapter III, Section 13 of the Muscatine City Code related to disorderly conduct. The intent of the proposed changes is to align the city code with the state code relating to the crime of disorderly conduct. This change will also enhance the city's abilities to address persons violating the Disorderly Conduct Code. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted? We have a motion by Councilman Freilich, with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich? Councilman Gordon, or Councilwoman Gordon? Councilman Hopkins? Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins, did I hear you?
You did not, because I didn't answer you. Aye.
Aye, all right. Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The motion carries, and we will move to 11B. We have a resolution that follows public hearing A. At the June 11, 2020, in-depth meeting, city council reviewed a request to amend the development agreement with Hershey Property and Bush Development to increase the amount of the tax increment rebate from a maximum of $500,000 to an amount not to exceed $700,000. At that meeting, city council gave consensus approval of this request. The increase in the maximum amount in the development agreement was included in the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment approved by city council on February 4 of 2021. At the February 18, 2021, meeting, city council set the required public hearing for the amended development agreement for March 4 of 2021 tonight. We have that public hearing, and now that that is over, the city council will now consider the resolution approving the amended development agreement. I have a motion to adopt this resolution then, as submitted.
So moved, Gordon.
So moved, Hopkins.
We have a motion by Councilman Gordon, with a second by Councilman Hopkins. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Brackett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich?
Can't hear you.
Still can't hear you. Councilman Freilich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. We will move to 11C, because I did see Councilman Gendrich. I read his lips saying aye. On 11C, and this is another resolution. All cities in Iowa are required by the state to pass a resolution establishing their maximum property tax dollars for certain levies prior to adoption and certification of the final budget. The city council recently completed the review of their proposed city budget for the upcoming year. The proposed total tax property levy rate for the 2021-2022 budget is $15.67209 per $1,000 evaluation, with the same total tax rate as the last nine years. With the 4.86% increase in taxable valuations, total property tax revenue for the city will increase by $677,005, which is a 4.76% increase in property tax dollars. First date requirement, the notice of public hearing for the first public hearing on the budget only included the general transit, tort liability, insurance, emergency, and employee benefits levies. The tax dollars on those levies total $12,597,193, compared to $11,991,593 for those levies for the current fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. This is a $605,600, which is 5.5% increase in tax dollars when considering only the levies in the notice. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Malcolm.
Second, please.
Second, Brackett.
We have a motion by Councilman Malcolm, with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Gendrich, how do you vote? Councilman Freilich?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted, but I don't think that we can count Councilman Gendrich's vote, since we can't hear. So I would go with six, then, Cinda. And we will move on to 11D, which sets a public hearing. The city council completed the budget review process for the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget in February. Two public hearings are required in order for city council to adopt the annual budget for the upcoming year. City council, at the February 18, 2021, meeting, set the first public hearing for March 4, 2021, on the proposed maximum property tax dollars for certain levies for 2021-2022. After this hearing, the city council will consider the resolution approving the maximum tax levy dollars for these level levies for fiscal year 2021-2022. After that action, on March 4 tonight, the city council will now need to set the next public hearing, here, public hearing number two, on the adoption of the actual budget and the certification of taxes for the 2021-2022 budget. The proposed total property tax levy rate for the 2021-2022 budget is $15.67209 per $1,000 evaluation, which is the same total tax rate as last nine years. This resolution will set a public hearing for March 18, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. on the adoption of the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. The city council will be meeting electronically via go-to meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic. At this electronic meeting, the public can comment on the proposed fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Electronic access information to the council meeting and public hearing is included in the public hearing notice and in the proposed agenda for the meeting on the city's website at muscatineiowa.gov. And I just wanted to add that you, a few people noticed that during the budget sessions that council went through when we were discussing and forming the budgets, we didn't take input from the public during that time, because that was the time for the council and staff to work through the budget. This now is going to be the time for the public to come forth and give their comments, their opinions, or their questions about the budget. So that will be two weeks from tonight at 7:00 p.m. But I have a motion to adopt this resolution and set this public hearing as submitted.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett, with a second by Councilman Hopkins. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Brackett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich? Councilman Freilich?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. All right, 11E sets another public hearing. The city council recently completed the budget review process for fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. As part of that review, revised estimate revenue and expenditure amounts for the current year we're in 2020-2021 were also reviewed by the city council. Each year, these revised estimate amounts become amendment number one to the current year budget. Prior to the adoption of a budget amendment, a public hearing is required. The attached resolution will set a public hearing for March 18, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. concerning amendment number one to the 2020-2021 city budget. The city council will be meeting electronically via go-to meeting due to COVID-19 pandemic. At this electronic meeting, the public can comment on the proposed amendment number one to fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Electronic access information to the council meeting and public hearing is included in the public hearing notice, and the posted agenda for the meeting is on the city's website at muscatineiowa.gov. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution and set this public hearing as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor, Freilich.
Second, please.
Brackett.
We have a motion by Councilman Freilich, with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Brackett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich? Councilman Freilich?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and the public hearing is set. And we will continue on. We're on 11F, which also sets a public hearing. The City of Muscatine Transit applies annually for state and federal transit funds through a consolidated funding application. A public hearing is required as part of the application. A public hearing will be set for April 15 of 2021. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
Second, please. We have a motion by Councilman Gordon, with a second by Councilman Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich? Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. And we'll move to 11G, which is awarding a contract. City of Muscatine Public Works Department has compiled a list of alleys to be overlaid with hot mix asphalt during fiscal year 2020-2021. The bids were received on February 23 of 2021 at 10:00 a.m. and have been tabulated. Minats was the lowest responsive, responsible bidder with a bid of $168,909.25. Funds for this project are available in the roadway maintenance budget. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Hopkins.
We have a motion by Councilman Hopkins, with a second by, who was the other person?
Yeah, can you hear me now, Mayor? That's a second by Gendrich?
Yes, I can hear you now. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and we're back to six ayes, Cinda. And we'll move on to 11H. Pardon me?
Seven, you mean.
Seven, seven, seven. The City of Muscatine Public Works has compiled a list of streets to be overlaid with hot mix asphalt during fiscal year 2020-2021. Bids were received on February 23 of 2021 at 10:00 a.m. and have been tabulated, and the bid tab was attached, as well as all the supporting documents. Bids were received, and Minats was the apparent low responsive, responsible bidder with a bid of $528,450. Funds for this project are available in the roadway maintenance budget. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Second, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett, with a second by Councilman Gordon. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. And we'll move to 11I, which is another contract. The City of Muscatine Public Works Department has compiled a list of streets to be full-depth concrete patched during fiscal year 2020-2021. The bids were received on February 23 of 2021 and have been tabulated. All American Concrete was the apparent low responsive, responsible bidder with a bid of $443,925. Funds for this project are available in the roadway maintenance budget. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilman Gordon, with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. We will move to 11J, which sets another public hearing. We've got a lot of those going tonight. At the February 18 meeting, city council tabled the approval of the development agreement with J&amp;D Family, Family One, and the Ailes Foundation for the development of 42 rental housing units on Steamboat Way. A public hearing will be held before city council considers approval of the development agreement. The proposed date for the hearing is March 18 of 2021. The reason that we are holding another public hearing, in case you noticed that we already did one before on this issue, is because there was an error in publication on the first hearing. We accidentally published the notice for the Grandview Loffs hearing twice, instead of once for the Grandview Loffs and once for this one. So we're having another public hearing to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution and set this public hearing as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
So moved, Gendrich.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett, with a second by Councilman Gendrich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes, and we'll move to 11K, which is a request to approve consultant agreements. Public Works requests that we enter into contracts with Koala Consulting and Steve Talby for construction-related consulting services for the remainder of calendar year 2021. A recent city financial audit recommended that city council approve annually all contracts and pay rates with consultants that provide engineering services on various construction- that provide engineering services on various construction projects. In an effort to follow up on this recommendation, staff prepared contract agreements with a review by the contractors for City Council consideration and approval. The pay rates outlined within each agreement are the same as the current pay rates. Public Works plans to transition away from having the majority of these services provided by consultants and instead utilizing city city staff, provided that such staff are funded in the fiscal year 2021-2022 approved budget. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
Second, please.
Second, Hopkins.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gordon with the second by Councilman Hopkins. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilman Gendrich, unless I missed something in the agreement, I don't see any parameters on the number of hours that these contracted workers are limited to or, you know, constraints on that and so forth. Is there any input on that from, you know, Pat about limitations on hours billed?
Well, I think we have Brian Steinman on the call. Can you speak to that for us, please?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so we do not have an hour limit set, primarily because they work whenever the contractor works. We don't have a known number for that. What they try to do is whenever the contractor is working, they're there doing their observations. During the construction season, it'll average typically eight to 10 hours a day. When the construction season winds down over the winter time, those hours are greatly reduced. But we have not set a maximum or a minimum number of hours. And really what this contract is doing is trying to get us through the points where we can get our in-house staff up to speed and taking off on their own. So this will just be for this one year, I think, and then we'll have to reevaluate next year when we, if we want to continue these contracts or not.
Does that answer your question, John?
Well, yeah, I, and of course, the, I guess it's just assumed that the oversight for these hours is taken care of by yourself and Pat or other staff or?
That's correct. Pat Lynch, City Engineers, he, these guys report directly to Pat. So he manages their day-to-day schedules, weekly schedules, and they report to him. So yes, he has the oversight, then I oversee Pat.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Brian, just for clarification, will you speak to the last sentence, which says that we had talked about public works transitioning away from using these hired contractors and instead using our own staff for that, provided that the staff are funded in the fiscal year 21-22 budget, which is going to be starting July 1 and will be voted on in two weeks? Can you speak to whether or not that was included in the budget?
We did include a position, an engineering position in the 21-20 or 22 budget that you'll be approving. So that will greatly assist us in providing these services in-house. Does that answer your question?
So basically, that last sentence of this, then, provided that the staff are funded, as long as the budget passes in two weeks, then that answers the question to this last sentence.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert.
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm.
Aye.
Councilman Brackett.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. And we'll move to 11L, which approves an amendment extension. Public Works staff request the approval of a one-year extension to the current agreement with Republic Service of Bettendorf, Iowa for the collection and disposal of residential curbside recycling. This extension will also amend contract language to include Republic Services providing a cardboard and single-stream recycling drop-off area at the City of Muscatine Transfer Station for Muscatine residents, while keeping the monthly curbside recycling rate at $3.86 per household. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor, Councilman Brackett.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with the second by Councilman Gendrich. Is there any discussion?
I would like to thank David for getting this, the recycling center or the recycling station there at the transfer station. I know a lot of people have been looking for better access to recycled cardboard and such outside of their recycle bins and I'll take advantage of it myself once it's up and available. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Councilman Gendrich, did you have a comment?
Uh, similar to what Kelsey's saying, I know that Dave and Brian and Carol and Nancy have had a lot of conversations about this issue, I think, and to enhance our citizens' service with the, you know, same, same cost and improved service and so forth with the transfer station option there, I compliment them for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Brackett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich.
Aye.
Councilman Freilich.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. And we'll move to 11M, which is a purchase order request. That recommends the approval of a purchase order in the amount of $10,720 to DJ Gongle of Cummings, Iowa, for the purchase of two pumps to be used for the leak date collection system at the Muscatine County landfill. Landfill. DJ Gongle and Associates was the lowest responsive bidder. $10,000 has been budgeted in the current fiscal year to purchase pumps. These funds are available in the landfill operating budget. The remaining $720 can be absorbed in the landfill operating budget. So they're both coming out of the budget, but this is just kind of explains that $10,000 was budgeted and there's leftover in there that the 720 will come out of. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gordon with the second by Councilman Gendrich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert.
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm.
Aye.
Councilman Brackett.
Aye.
The request is approved. We'll move to 11N, which approves an agreement. Staff request approval of an agreement with Hy-Vee Food Store for concession operations at Kentstein Park, the Soccer Complex, and the Aquatic Center for a period of five years with annual reviews and adjustments as mutually agreed upon between the city and Hy-Vee. Staff solicited bids for 30, from 30 potential vendors, and Hy-Vee was the only responsive bidder. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Hopkins.
We have a motion by Councilman Hopkins with the second by Councilman Freilich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Brackett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich. Councilman Gendrich. Back to six. Councilman Freilich.
Aye.
The request is approved. We'll count six ayes. And we'll move on to 11O. Here's another purchase order request. Staff requests approval of a purchase order in the amount of $12,000 to Alliant Energy for the installation of pass service to the newly constructed hangars at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. Such service was anticipated by both parties when lease agreements for the hangars were executed. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Brockert.
Malcolm, second.
Who? Who seconded that?
I see it there, and I think Councilwoman Gordon as well, so pick one.
I have Councilwoman Brockert and Councilman Malcolm for a second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Councilman Brackett.
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm.
Aye.
Request is approved with all ayes. We'll move to 11P, another purchase order. The Water Resource and Recovery Facility staff have received two quotes for the purchase and installation of two new pumps and control panels at the Magnolia Lift Station. The station's one existing pump needs a backup to maintain continuous operation and an alarm system to notify staff when there is an issue. Iowa Pumps Works, Iowa Pump Works, was the lowest bid of $15,497.97. There's $25,000 budgeted for this project. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with the second by Councilwoman Gordon. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert.
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm.
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett.
Aye.
Request is approved with all ayes. And we will move to 11Q, which regards a contract. Since the Grandview Avenue reconstruction project includes funding from the Iowa Department of Transportation, their processes must be followed for construction, project management, and inspection. Due to staffing changes and current workload, the city requested a proposal from Bolton &amp; Mink to assist the construction phase services. The contract with Bolton &amp; Mink will be on an hourly basis with a not-to-exceed total of $495,841. This contract will be for the duration of the entire project and includes assistance with Appia, which I found out is like an app that they need to use, Doc Express, which is a signing process, and the Iowa Department of Transportation audit at the end of the project. The cost for construction phase services was included in the original budget for this project. The proposal amount of $495,841 is approximately 4.9% of the engineer's opinion of probable construction cost of $10,100, or $10,100,000, excuse me. According to the Iowa Department of Transportation's Local Public Agency Guide on Securing Consultant Assistance with Design and Construction, the typical percentage of total construction cost for construction phase services falls in the 12% to 15% range. Do we have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Brockert.
Second, please. We have a motion by Councilwoman Brockert with the second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Freilich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert.
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm.
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett.
Aye.
The request is approved with all ayes. And we will move on down. That was the end of our action items. We will move on down to communications from our council. Councilman Freilich, do you have anything tonight?
Did you ask me, Mayor? I missed it. Didn't come across.
Yes, I asked you.
Yes, I just wanted to say thanks to Brian to get that hot box out and get some of these potholes in. I see him working every day out in the streets and I'm glad to see it happening. Thanks, Brian.
Very good. Councilman Gendrich, did you have anything tonight?
Council for line, we are free to begin.
Was that Brian talking?
It was.
That was Brian, I think. Have I got the, have I got the mic, Mayor?
Say thank you to the council for allowing us to purchase that piece of equipment so that we could use it, put it to good use. So it's working out very well for us. We're very appreciative to have it.
Very good, thank you. Yes, John, it's your turn.
Okay, I had a nice compliment today from a couple of people. Attended the Art Center, the Children's Play Area, and all the other quilts and all the other things going on at the Art Center. Wanted to pass that along, that it's great we have Melanie and her staff doing all that great work for our citizens. Wanted to pass that along.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gordon.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Hopkins.
Uh, nothing tonight, ma'am.
Councilwoman Brockert.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Malcolm.
Yes, Your Honor, just one little thing that we've been talking about for a while. We're still working on this flag for the soccer field. My understanding, we're above $600 still short. So I need 600 people to show up with $1 bill and leave it in the finance office. Or you can put it in an envelope and leave it for me at the YMCA. I'm normally there every morning going to the gym, swimming or whatever. We need to get the $600 done so they can start fixing that up for us because it's almost soccer season and everybody's getting ready to play. And I want the world to see us, because I'd like to ask the people from NASA to take a picture of that soccer field from the space station and send us a copy of the picture. I mean, so we just need $600 to get to the finish line. I need everybody's help. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Brackett.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Linda, back from sunny Florida. Nothing?
Nothing for me.
Okay, and Carol, City Administrator.
Nothing for me tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a couple of quick things. First of all, I would like to share and thank Senior Resources. We all know that a lot of our seniors are having trouble navigating the vaccination process, which is a little bit clunky for people to figure out how to, how to get access to their vaccination now that it's when they're in that correct tier. And Senior Resources has raised their hand and stepped forward and said, "We will be that link for seniors." So if you have questions about how to access getting the vaccine or how to sign up, how to go online and sign up on some of the waiting lists, you can call Senior Resources 263-7292, and they will help you through that process. And I thank them for that service. I know there are a lot of seniors who are really utilizing that. They've just been doing it for a couple of days and already they've had a lot of people reaching out to them for help. So thank you to them. And then secondly, I just wanted to share that the mayor's, our city show is going to be restarting next Thursday. Our guest will be the Chamber of Commerce Director, Eric Reed, or Eric, I'm sorry. Eric, Eric is going to be our first guest. I'm having a brain freeze there on your last name, Eric. I've been talking. Eric Reader. I had the first half. Thank you. I hope he's not watching. And so he's going to be our first guest and we'll go from there. So I look forward to spending time back visiting with people in the community and sharing all the wonderful things that we have going on here in our city with everyone. Thank you, everyone. Hearing nothing else, I did see a thank you from Parks and Rec for the Arbor Day proclamation, and we look forward to seeing some of those trees in collaboration with some of those partners. So that's going to be a great a great resource for all of us. Thank you all and have a wonderful evening. Thank you all and have a wonderful evening and we will see you here next week for our in-depth meeting. Carol, do you mind giving us letting us know what we have coming up next week? Do you remember? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, I know of one thing. We have the bird. We're going to bring the discussion of electronic scooters back.
Oh, that's right.
The that one vendor, Bird, came and presented to the council a little bit about the technology they use for like they're called personal mobility devices, electronic scooters. And so Andrew Fangman has done some research based on some of the questions council asked and he will be coming back next Thursday to give a presentation on that. So that's that's one of the key items. There may be a couple of others I'm not thinking about, but I know that's one that we'll be talking about.
Great, thank you. Thank you all. Have a wonderful rest of your evening and we'll see you here next week.
May I?
May I?
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.